So is yours, sir.
Thank you very much and welcome everyone to the May 11th council briefing. We sent out an agenda and some information to you in advance of tonight's meeting. We also have a surprised fifth item that we will be talking about as well. The first item that we wanted to talk about with with counsel is the consideration of an additional $25,000 low income homestead exemption. Several months ago, the city was approached by Jerry Holland, who basically indicated to us that he was in the process of seeing if he could get uniformity across all of Duval County for the except the exceptions of this particular homestead exemption. The city of Jacksonville has just recently adopted this exemption, I believe, in March of this particular year. He's basically looking for the three beach communities and the town of Baldwin to at least consider the exemption to see if it's something that we would want to adopt. The information that you were provided in advance was an email that was received by Jerry Holland, as well as the anticipated fiscal impact to each of the four municipalities outside of the city of Jacksonville and the actual number of homesteaded properties that would be affected. So for the city of Jacksonville Beach, for this particular exemption, it would be approximately 104 properties impacted with a total fiscal impact of just over $10,000 per year. We do also have CFO Ashley Gossip on the on the meeting as well. And we'd be interesting to hear what the perspective is of city council. Okay, hearing no comments from any members of council. Is this something that you'd like staff to prepare for formal adoption and bring back to council at a regular meeting or formal consideration? I'm seeing nods and thumbs up. Okay, then that is the direction that we will proceed with. Thank you very much. And that was an easy number one. Let's move on to a little bit more complicated issue, and that is issue number two Jacksonville Drive sidewalk extension. You should have all received a more detailed slideshow presentation from our Public Works Department and their consultant, Brian McKee with Hanson, who is also on the meeting with us this evening. I'm going to turn the reins over to Kale Moore from our Public Works, who is going to walk you through the options that exist for putting in an urban trail on Jacksonville Drive. Just as a recap for the council and those who may be listening, the city wanted to consider installing an eight foot wide sidewalk on Jacksonville Drive in order to facilitate pedestrian traffic from the west end of the city along this corridor to get them to the intersection of South Beach Parkway and Jacksonville Drive. Counsel, a couple of months ago, asked us to take a look at the possibility of moving that urban trail to the north side of Jacksonville Drive for a little bit ease of pedestrian impact. Once you get to South Beach Parkway. Kale and our consultant will talk to you a little bit about what they found out with regards to utility conflicts, driveway conflicts, and what the ultimate financial impact would be of doing this particular relocation. I would also like to point out before I turn this over to him is that this alternative has not yet been shared with the CRA. Planning Director Bill Mann does plan on holding a virtual briefing with them towards the end of this month, at which point he would also share these plans with them and get their input as well. So with that being said, Kale, I will turn it over to you and don't forget the space bar.
All right. Thank you, Mike. I'm sorry. We're trying to coordinate this kind of at the last minute and we were actually going to have Brian, the consultant, and run you through the slides because he was instrumental in helping us put those together. So if that's all right, Jacob, are you handling that control? So if you can switch that over to Brian and then we'll all answer questions and the Public Works Director and the engineer and myself and Mike.
Yep, Brian, you just let me know when to forward to the next slide.
All right. You want me to say next slide when you when I want you to flip?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, that's just the intro slide that we were going to have up for whatever type of meeting we did. So if you want, go ahead and go to the next slide. Okay, so basically, I think Mike had already summed it up what we were trying to do here. We're trying to present pretty much the two options. Like Mike said, we had had it. We've been approached by the city to go ahead and put it on the south side, and that was going to enable us to also have a small sidewalk on the north side. In that, you know, he came back to me and said there was preference for it being on the north side to have the one crossing when you went across Sanctuary Parkway or South Beach Parkway, I'm sorry. So with that, we went ahead and looked at it and what impacts there might be and set up this little presentation. And here's a little bit of outline where we summarize the current design issues with putting that foot path on the north side of Jacksonville Drive and why that might cause realignment of Jacksonville Drive to accommodate that path. And we'll walk through those impacts that dictate why that would need to be done. And then also the additional cost to go back and realign Jack's drive to be able to accommodate that shared use path on that north side and tie in existing features such as the existing driveways. Next slide. So here, boom, there you go. So on this slide here, you can see how of course, this project, you know, started out as the drainage project. And with that, we were going to be coming in and we were going to be adding curb and gutter along the roadways to catch the drainage, put in a pipe system underground. It would have catch basins to catch the drainage flow and take them to the pond. It's on the south side of Butler right now. It's the sediment south sedimentation basin. And with that, we was going to go back in and tie everything in with the profile grade or the, you know, the vertical grade that we have to do for that road and tie in the driveways and put in new sidewalk that would be impacted by that construction. So with that, we were going to have up to an eight foot sidewalk or eight foot path, I'd say, on that south side of Jack's Drive with a six foot sidewalk on the north side. And with that eight foot path on the south side and the alignment, the way it is now, we would have an opportunity to kind of offset that eight foot path from the roadway. So there would be a strip of grass or vegetation or landscaping opportunities between the road and that sidewalk. And we could kind of meander it through the right of way down through there. We'd have more flexibility with it. So you can see there on the proposed typical section looking east, how we could accommodate both of those. And also, if you look down there to the bottom, you'd see an example of an eight foot path that we would envision going on that south side of Jack's Drive to be able to get that green area between the road and the path itself. And just to hit on that, the FHWA guidance is kind of providing when you're providing pedestrian facilities, they prefer that you put them on both sides of the roadway to accommodate pedestrian traffic. Next slide. Okay, so here we go. Looking at issues that would be associated with having it on the north side. And when you look at, I guess, a couple of these photos here on the side show some instances of what we would be looking at if we put that on the north side. Whoa. Okay, so first, does that keep slipping, switching on everybody else? We can get back to slide four, I think it was. There we go. So first issue with that would be that we would have to have that sidewalk on the north side, the eight foot path, that additional width would have to be right up against the back of curb. As you see in that top photo, it's a little representation of what it would look like. And toward as you get east towards South Beach Parkway, we would have some type of wall like in the both of those pictures. So it would really make users of that path feel like they're really crammed up against the roadway, no real appealing, you know, path for them to be separated from the traffic, but have them right up against it. And the problems we run into is that when we get to some of these driveways with keeping the profile so we have drainage flow that comes from properties into our roadways to be able to catch that drainage and not get, whoa. Not get.
I'm sorry. That's 13th Avenue South and South Beach Parkway. That's not that's not Jacksonville Drive. That is far north.
Right, right, right. Now, this is an example that Kale gave me pictures of to show you guys what this would look like if we had to put it on that north side of Jack's Drive. That's what these pictures are showing.
The north side of Jack's Drive doesn't have that raised curbage on the edge of the house. There's more. There's more space on the north side of Jacksonville Drive than that.
Yes.
This isn't a good comparison.
Well, as you get east, as you get east of Tropical Terrace and you tie back into South Beach Parkway, the way that properties come down in slope, you would have a small wall at the back of sidewalk to tie without getting right away because of the profile of the roadway and the elevation of the existing edge or the existing property. You would have a little wall similar to that. Now, would it be exactly that? The wall might not be that high, but there is 1,000 feet that we've already looked at that you would need some type of wall without going on to people's properties to tie in and grade. The kale was basically wanting to put a picture there to show you what it would possibly look like. So for the takeaways from that picture is seeing that the sidewalk is right against the back of curb. Plus, there is a vertical feature that would be at the back of that sidewalk. So somebody riding a bicycle would have concerns of their pedals hitting that wall, things like that, that they would have to shy away from that wall. So really, you're not going to see the benefits of using a whole eight foot wide path. So that's really what to take away from those pictures. Now, it may not be as severe as what it looks like in that picture, but you would have some type of curve. And the plans we've already done that have a six foot sidewalk there already have locations that have a small curve. So that's how we were able to assess that if we go to eight foot, there would even be a longer length of that curve needed. Or you're going to have to approach property owners to re tie in on their property and do grading on their property. So basically, that's why it came to where to get away from this and to be able to give some type of separation and tie in driveways, there would be a realignment of Jack's Drive required, which would basically mean we would probably shift that road about 10 feet to the south. And that would allow us to maintain driveway tie-ins. So people don't drag vehicles when they pull up into their driveways. Also, it would help us to maintain a constant eight foot width path. Right now, the way we have it designed with a six foot sidewalk coming on that north side at the driveways enabled to in order for us to enable to tie in without making their slopes in their driveways more severe to where they could possibly have vehicles dragging. We've had to shrink those crossings down to what would be a three foot wide area that would meet ADA requirements to get across the driveways. Next slide. And this here just goes to show some of the analysis that we put into it to look at these driveways. There on the left, you'll see the simulation of the sidewalk as I was talking about. That's a six foot width right now. You can see when we tried to maintain a six foot sidewalk across this particular driveway that we had a conflict point where the vehicle would drive. And if you look close enough in that, you can see where the blue lines on the slide gets steeper than the red that are existing today. So that is what creates possibly the dragging of the vehicles. And you know, anything we go out there and do, if we make it steeper, if we keep it the same and the vehicle drags, they're going to say it never drug before. So we have to do our best to match either what's existing today or flatten those slopes as much as we can. So if you look to the right there on that slide, you'll see where we had to shrink it down to three feet and you'll see that the blue line is a little flatter than what's existing today. And then you have no conflicts with the vehicle dragging. Next slide. And of course, you know, you'll see at the bottom of all these slides, this is just evaluating a pretty much a pedestrian, I mean, a passenger vehicle. So if you take input trailers or something like that, I know there are several homeowners out there that have boat trailers that they park up in their yards and that would just compound this issue and make it more complicated than to get in their driveway without dragging. But this one basically shows with the eight foot path, if we were to come across with it, how now we have two conflict points in that same particular driveway. And then if you go to the right and see where we have basically realigned the road to get it over to where this person's driveway will tie in and at least meet the existing grade that's there today. Next slide. Actually, you know what? Back up real quick, just so I can point one thing out because I know a lot of people probably will drive the road and see and think it's not as steep. But a big issue there is if you look at that and see where existing right of way is and see how close the house line we have in there is, that's their actual garage. So there's not a lot of room to work with slopes to tie in. So that's a lot of what is hindering being able to get these slopes flattened out and what would, you know, kind of cause the realignment of the road to get some separation and flatten the slopes out. Okay, next slide. All right. So this slide basically shows the alignment of Jacksonville Drive today in the existing right of way lines. Next slide, you should see it phase into where it'll show the realignment. This is what it would look like with the realignment to get the eight foot path on the north side of the road. Again, this allows for the driveways to tie equal or better slopes than are on those driveways today. It allows for a two foot side between the path and the back of curb. And then this would get away from needing any of those walls that we showed in those photos. We could basically tie in now without a curb at the back of sidewalk. Pedestrians on their bicycles would not feel like they're in a tight space. Any conflicts with their pedals on their bicycle or anything like that. Next slide. Okay, but with that realignment, there are some impacts. We have multiple underground utilities that you can see there fiber optic lines, things like that. And as we slide that road to the south, it puts it over top of those facilities that are there today. So basically, we would be impacting those and they would have basically, we would have to approach them about relocations. Most utility companies do not want to keep their facilities under the road because of future maintenance. Also, if you see, there's minimal distance left between the back of the curb and right away for utilities to relocate. So there's not really a lot of room for them to relocate and leaves them a very small window to get into. I know we've talked with Kale and Beaches Energy is planning to go underground. So that just complicates things with trying to get them underground and with these other facilities, trying to get in that small area through there. Doesn't really leave us any ability to meander the path at all when we do it on this north side. And also, there would be no pedestrian facility opportunities on that south side. And if you remember when we were trying to put the path on the south side, we were actually going to accommodate some pedestrian facilities on both sides of the road. So with this alignment here, you would actually have people that are on the south side of Jack's Drive having to cross any of these intersections or wherever to get over to use that path where if they have it on both sides, you know, they kind of have an option of what side of the road they want to be on. Next slide. And then here Kale want me to throw something together to give a little bit of an idea of some additional cost. The additional costs to get that eight foot on the north side and realign the roadway versus keeping it on that south side and keeping the sidewalk on the other side was approximately $150,000 more to locate the path on that north side. And then the other unknown at this point would be additional costs associated with relocating those existing utilities. Next slide.
So let me just, this is Kale. So let me clarify that $150,000 estimate. Part of the reason that's not higher is because the original plan we were looking at to put it on the south side already factored in the cost of the eight foot path on the south side and reconstructing the up to six foot, you know, sidewalk on the north side. So there were some additional construction costs already factored in. If you were able to put a second sidewalk on the other side, then that 150 would quickly jump to, you know, a higher cost. So that 150 is an additional cost plus you lose the second sidewalk.
Correct.
I think that concludes the presentation. Jacob, if we can take the slides down, we'll see if any of the council members have questions for either Kale or Brian.
So there's no way to do it on these north end without putting a wall up in certain areas?
Oh, only, only if you realign the roadway and push it to the south. But the realignment, if we were to realign that road and shift it about 10 feet or so to the south, which would impact the utilities, that would my understanding from the engineer is and Brian can confirm this, that would remove any need for any of those retaining walls on the north side for that eight foot path.
That's correct. If we kept it on the north side and did not do a realignment, we would have kind of the same situation we have right now with the six foot sidewalk we've designed over there. When you got to several of the driveways and it may be all four of them. I think there's four along there. There may have been one out of the four that that worked fine. But we would have an eight foot path. You would not have a consistent eight foot path across those driveways. The actual area that would be sloped at what we call is a 2% cross slope on there would only be able to be allowed for three feet. So when you got up to that, basically what you would have is a trail eight feet wide. When you got to these driveways, the crossing area that met ADA would only be three feet wide. So we would have to transition that somehow. So you would lose some more distance because you had to do that transition. Plus, then when you got up on that east end, like I was saying, we already have a wall there for the six foot sidewalk. So you would definitely have a wall for the eight foot sidewalk. It's just right now we have six foot and we have some separation between the back curb and that sidewalk. So that would basically be filled in with concrete. So you could do it, but you would not have an eight foot consistent path. Every time you came to a driveway, it would narrow up to probably three feet and then it would flare back out. Some of those driveways are so close that you may have three feet just between the driveways. We didn't look at that in detail, but it for the transitions, but you definitely have to shrink it down. And we wanted our goal was to keep it eight foot talking. We're talking with Kale. All of our goal was to try to keep it eight foot consistent with through that whole path and not shrink down to those driveways. And to do that, yes, we have to realign the road to get the driveways to tie.
And if you realign the road, do you have to put those walls in?
No, that's what I was saying. We would eliminate the wall because that's where I was saying, we looked at it already. It would cause us a 10 foot shift to get away from all of that. If we had a wall, it wouldn't be much at all and it would be at the east end. And basically, just to kind of give you an idea of that, you can't go out there today and look at that elevation, that road. We're putting in a curb system. We kind of have to drop the road some so that the curb is existing elevation so that the flow still comes into the road. So that curb itself is six inches high. So we're already have to drop the road about six inches to get the water into that curb and gutter so we can get it off of the property. And that's what steepens up those driveways.
Lord Dumont, you have your hand raised.
Thank you. And when you keep mentioning a six, a current six foot, I take it you're talking about a current six foot sidewalk on the north side of Jacksonville Drive between America and South Beach Parkway. That's not a six foot sidewalk.
No, the existing is not. We're talking about what we would put back in as proposed.
All right. So you'd remove, it's about a four foot sidewalk.
Yeah.
So you'd remove the four foot, not this proposal would be remove the four foot extended extended out to six foot, not realign the road and put another eight feet on the south side.
Exactly.
Only between America and South Beach Parkway.
Well, right now, I think Kale, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we're this project would only handle between Grande and South Beach. Eventually, it would go down to, what is that road down at Sanctuary, Kale?
America.
It's Sanctuary. We would go to America and then on to Sanctuary. The reason this is only going to Grande is because of the the significant and very significant road work and rework that's being done for the drainage project. And we're looking at a subsequent phase as part of the CRA Ocean Terrace improvements that's right on the heels of this that would then address some drainage and some improvements to the other section of Jacksonville Drive east or west of this and part of America. And at that time, like I said, not, we're not talking about five years later, hopefully 10 years later. But right on the heels of this project would be that subsequent one that would then fill in that remainder part of the pathway to Sanctuary.
And what are we, what's the timeline we're looking at for South Beach Parkway to Third? Because that's where it really starts getting iffy because if you put it on the south side of that, you have the entrances and the exits to the plazas and the medical facilities. And there's no south crosswalk. There's no crosswalk on A1A on the southern part of that intersection.
I don't believe we have a capital project scheduled yet for Jacksonville Drive from South Beach Parkway to A1A. Clearly, as we start talking about an urban trail system, that is one of the primary corridors that we would want to look at on the south end of the city to move people from west to east and east to west. There's obviously a substantial amount of right of way on the north side of the road that we have the ability to work with. And there are also limited crossings on the north side as well. But with that being said, there is no capital project, I believe, that is planned at this point in time for that section of road.
Because that is the busiest section. If you look at that one, Oceola and 16th, so the Oceola and 16th are relatively busy. Jacksonville Drive is very busy, especially on that north side of the sidewalk. At least at Oceola, the sidewalks on both sides of the road, so it kind of disperses it. And then on 16th, they just drive in the road. Bike down the middle of the road. So it ends up being just that four foot sidewalk on Jacksonville Drive between South Beach Parkway and Third that really is problematic. Not as much on the west side, but it really is on the east side. But that there's no timeline, no thinking about when we're looking at that. I take it we're doing our capital improvement projects five years in advance. So within the next five years, we're not looking at doing that at all.
I'll address that one. Once we have a strategic plan, that may reshuffle projects within our CIP based on priorities established by city council. I can tell you that the Parks and Recreation Department, along with some input from Public Works, is already starting to conceptually look at an urban trail system for the city. But clearly, where we focus our efforts and what we consider to be first priority projects will be something we need some policy direction on from council. But clearly, the the west east movement throughout the city is something that was very highly touted in each of the community conversations that was held. That included everything from Penman Road to A1A, South Beach Parkway. All of those roadway corridors were issues that people felt they needed improvements in order to safely cross and traverse along those corridors.
Thank you.
Councilwoman, if I, if I may say, I want to make sure I understand. So you're talking of course, all the way to the beach, I guess, but you're also talking about that portion along Jack's Drive between South Beach and Third, correct?
Yes, when once you get east of Third, between Ponavita, between Third and Ponte Vedra Boulevard, we can do some stuff there. But once you get to the east side of Ponte Vedra Boulevard, we're pretty hemmed in with the properties that are there. But it's just getting people over to that side. That's very problematic. I think it was two weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago. There was a pretty good accident at that intersection of Ponte Vedra Drive and Jacksonville Drive. And that's, there's, there are many, many near misses in that section. I've kind of, I've been in discussions with the state DOT about trying to fix some of it with lighting and what they can do, but not really, there aren't many options. It's kind of like there is no this is this will fix everything option.
Thank you. I just wanted to confirm because there has been some some informal discussion internally, especially with Bill Mann. Significant portion of that north side of Jacksonville Drive along Paradise Key is within the CRA. And there's been discussion of expanding that sidewalk to an eight foot path. So we've talked about that at the prior meeting where that that's why it seemed to make sense to put the eight foot path on the north side of the project we're working on. But you know, if if we ended up having to put it or choosing to put it, you chose to put it on the south side, we would at least have a second path on the north side. Some folks may have to cross Jack's Drive. Conversely, some folks go south at that intersection anyway. But there is some discussion to in the hopefully near future to use as a CRA project to expand most of that sidewalk, if not all of it, along that north part of Jack's Drive east of South Beach.
Vice Mayor Hoffman, you're up next.
I just want to check in and make sure I'm understanding correctly. So we can do a six foot sidewalk on the north side and an eight foot path on the south side and not realign the road? Is that what you said? Okay. Um, I guess if we have a six foot sidewalk on the north side, why do we need an eight foot path on the south side, especially since it doesn't really connect anything at least not at this point? And my other concern is on that side, there's a lot of overgrown area from just behind that neighborhood there. But part of it, there seems to be a lot of drainage swales. And I know we're concerned about covering up utilities, but what do we do about drainage when we're putting an eight foot path in there? And then even in the diagram, if we don't want to move the road and cover up utilities, won't this eight foot path be doing that too? I am sorry, I asked, I got a lot in that one.
That's okay. I'll briefly begin to respond. One thing with an eight foot path on the south side, I don't think it's fair to say there's no connectivity. There's just a perceived inconvenience if you're going north or continuing to go east of crossing another road at a traffic controlled, you know, safely controlled intersection. So and some folks do go south on that.
I was, I'm sorry, I was talking about that it ends at Grande and doesn't go all the way to America. So I was more concerned about that end.
I'm sorry, I understand. And that's why I said we, we would not want to delay that further project. Another option is to continue in the current plan to construct that sidewalk or path. Perhaps we could construct a narrower path on that portion and just see it as kind of a throwaway temporary path for one to two years until the subsequent phase is designed and bid for construction and construction begins. As far as the swell in that area, the design drainage improvements would look at that and include a, you know, some underground piping and catch basins if we needed to replace any swell area. and include a, you know, some underground piping and catch basins if we needed to replace any swell area. That swell currently is, I don't know how formal it is in the original design of that roadway and intersection. I think it's just kind of something that, that was, you know, kind of organically created along the way. There is some growth, some shrubbery, it's some trees there that are on city property. And that's another one of those things we run into a lot where, you know, if we are given direction to move forward on that, we just have to work with the property owner and help them understand that those need to be taken down and moved or replanted at their expense or some combination.
And just to follow up, I know being able to have more pedestrians and bike riders on a path off the road will help. But does any of this do anything to help slow down the speeding that goes on in that area?
Brian, if you have some experience and you can comment on this. But I know generally, one thing we're making, the significant change we're making is we're planning to put in a standard six-inch-high curb. And right now, there's no curb. And typically, when you install infrastructure like that, it tends to be in some form or another, a little bit of traffic calming. And hopefully would help curb some of that higher-speed traffic.
Yeah, Kale, that's about the only benefit that you would, that you would see from that, on that perspective, is the curb and gutter. Just a raised barrier there would tend to slow them down. It's, I think we still have the road being 10-foot wide. So that's a conservative width, but it's a standard width for that roadway. It's not like we're shrinking it down to nine feet to make them feel tight to slow them down. So the only thing you're going to get for really a traffic calming is the physical barrier of the curb. You go back just a little bit to that last question with the swells. I know Kale talked about it a little bit. But on that south side, there's really no predominant swales to catch drainage until you get west of Grande. That's one reason why with the drainage improvements, we've decided that the limit stopped at Grande. East of Grande, there is overgrowth over along that south side of the road. But you know, it's basically just overgrowth, brush, things like that, if we get cleared out to put the path in. We've done cross-sections there as part of what we already designed for the drainage project. And all those properties tend to drain to the road. Plus, like I said, when we add in the curb and gutter, because of that curb and gutter being the six-inch height, we have to basically lower that road equivalent of about six inches. So those properties continue to drain into that curb and gutter. So that really doesn't impact the swell from Grande to South Beach. It's basically west of Grande where we run into the swell problems. And that's, we'll be dealt with with the other drainage project. And that's why we lumped it in with that.
Any other questions, thoughts, or comments?
I think there was mention of no crossing on the south side of Jack's Drive. But I pulled that up and we, there is a striped crosswalk on that south side of Jacksonville Drive across South Beach Parkway.
I was referring to A1A.
Oh, at A1A, yeah, okay. Yeah, because there's no sidewalk on the south side on that stretch. So the DOT didn't put a crossing. But I know if you had a sidewalk coming over there, you could convince the DOT to do it. Because in all of our projects with them, it's their goal to put crosswalks on all four corners or all four legs of an intersection.
And let me comment that we briefly, there hasn't been a formal study done, to my knowledge, right now. But we've discussed it internally. And it looks like it would be very challenging if we chose to put a sidewalk or certainly an eight-foot path on the south, south of Jack's Drive between South Beach Parkway and Third. I'm not going to say it's impossible. We haven't looked at it formally yet. But it would be, I will say, from what we've looked at so far, it would be challenging.
Costly.
And one of the things I'll throw out there for Council to think about as well is that the, the two parcels on the west side of South Beach Parkway, both north and south of Jacksonville Drive, those are both owned by the City of Jacksonville Beach. And those are both properties that at some point in time could undergo some redevelopment to be community amenities or community assets. There is the possibility that on the southwest corner of the intersection, you could end up with some type of a pocket park. And on the northwest corner, which is a large parcel that extends parallel to South Beach Parkway for some distance to the north, could end up being a modified, not just urban trail, but also some type of a linear park that takes you further to the north and brings you up to Sunshine Park. So in terms of that intersection in the future, I think there's a lot of opportunities, both north and south of the roadway. But with that being said, there have, there are no concrete plans with what happens with either of those parcels.
Mike, doesn't the city own one and the CRA own the other lot? Or does the CRA own both? I thought the city owned one, CRA owned one.
Yeah, I'm counting the CRA as a branch of the city. So it's, it's under governmental control. The City of Jacksonville Beach is the right terminology.
Just different pools of money, different board, you know, just making sure.
Yeah, so do I understand correctly that, that we're saying that the lane width right now from South Beach Parkway West is 10 feet for each lane?
That's correct.
So, I mean, we certainly could reduce the lane width to nine feet. And that would, to Ms. Hoffman's point, would help with the traffic calming. Because, you know, I certainly have seen that in places where the roads are narrow where the cars, the cars don't tend to go as fast. And that would give us a little more, give us a little more space to work with. Is that something that we could consider?
Kale, you want me to? I see you lips moving, but nothing saying.
I just don't know, Brian, how much you can comment, since you, you guys, folks have done so much work on some of the, how to use that corridor width right now.
I, I can tell you that usually the minimum traveling width we usually go to is 10 feet. I mean, once you start getting lower than that, and you know, like we're putting the physical barrier in there, you have a vehicle breakdown, it just really messes things up when you go below 10 feet. I'd really have to look back at what some of the studies have shown for lanes with less than 10. But working with DOT and all my other local municipalities, we do not tend to go between 10 feet. If it's less than 10 feet, it's some rural, out in the middle of nowhere roadway.
If I can make, I don't want to further muddy the waters intentionally, but I don't know, I don't think this has been discussed. I don't know if there would be appetite for a five or up to six-foot more conventional sidewalk on both the north and the side. If, if we're having some trouble understanding the benefit, perceived benefit of a sidewalk on the north side and then a full eight-foot path on the side or on the south. It's just, we kind of started about, talking about multi-use trails. But I just wanted to throw that other option out there for consideration.
I'm still in favor of having a multi-use trail. We got to start somewhere. And yeah, the preference would be on the north side. But adding that to six feet, we need a, I walk these roads a lot. And I will say that when I'm walking, I always have to look behind me because there's always bikes coming up and they don't always have a bell or I might have my headphones on. And so it's actually kind of dangerous to be walking on those sidewalks at times, especially that Jacksonville Drive one. That's the one that you, like, you take 15 steps, you look behind you to see if there are bikes coming. Because you know that there are going to be bikes coming. So yeah, definitely, I really do like the eight-foot path. So this way, we can have bikes and walkers at the same time. Between America and South Beach Parkway, I don't think is as problematic as between South Beach Parkway and Third. That said, we have a new neighborhood down there. We still have, we have a lot of houses on the, off America. So I think that they would be used a lot.
And I guess don't get too scared of the eight-foot on one side and six-foot on one side. Because if you look at Kernan Boulevard, that's what the City of Jacksonville has done. They have a six-foot or five-foot sidewalk on the west side of Kernan Boulevard. And they have an eight-foot path on the east side of Kernan Boulevard. And that was basically just because of the traffic out there. And they wanted the pedestrians to have that area, like you said, to kind of give the bikes a place to go.
Kernan's a huge road. I don't even think that's a comparable comparison.
I'm just saying, there, it's, some people, I think, have a misperception. Like if I'm putting an eight-foot path over here, why am I even doing a sidewalk on the other side of the road? It's not that uncommon. I'm just throwing that out there as an example of something you can see has been done, where there is an eight-foot on one side and a six-foot on the other side. That's all. Just didn't want somebody to get scared off that we got an eight-foot path on one side. So why are we even doing a sidewalk on the other side? The conception is they don't like pedestrians just willy-nilly having their own decision-making process of crossing the road.
Vice Mayor, do you have another comment?
Have we talked to the neighbors in this area that would be impacted? I mean, again, I'm just still, Kale, you're muted. I don't know if you were talking.
No, I haven't, yeah, I, I have not been directed to that, that stage of a process yet. I don't believe anyone did prior to, prior to me starting on this project.
Because, I mean, I feel the same as I did last time. And it's that I really want to support a multi-use path. And I really want to support this as the direction that we're going. But an eight-foot path on one side and a six-foot path on the other, divided by one road that's only 20 feet wide, just seems like a lot of pavement. And the thought, Kale, you kind of, you made me more averse to it when you said maybe a temporary solution for a little while. And that, what if we're going to do this? And I know it's not technically people's lawns, but they're going to perceive it as we're paving through their lawns. So I think it's going to need to look good and be really highly used. And I just don't feel like, again, a four-block length of path at this point, because that's all we're talking about really at this point, is going to be as highly used as we need it to be to make sense.
Yeah, the temporary was just to avoid the appearance of a pathway to nowhere. I, I would prefer not to do that and just have a pathway to nowhere for two blocks of it or a block and a half about, until we had the second phase of the project come in. But this was somewhere we, you know, we were directed to, and this might be a great place to start with this new connectivity concept. So just looking for direction.
Councilmember Golding?
One of my concerns would be that if we have two paths, one on the north side and one on the south side, like what Ms. Dumont said, what, you know, if you're crossing, if most people are going to cross on the north side and you've got bicycles coming, you know, from the east to the west. I mean, what's the, what's the, what's to motivate them to go to the south side to the wider path? I mean, I, I mean, I, I would be concerned that the bicycles would continue on that north path and just in, cause increase in conflict for pedestrians that are using that north path. So, you know, in, in some ways, I'm not sure that I understand why. I, I'm not sure that having two paths, if, it's going to be a good solution in that, in that case. If we, you know, if there's only going to be one way to, to going west to, I mean, going westward, if the only place that you can cross South Beach Parkway is on the north side. So I, I don't know. I'm not, I'm not sold on the two paths at this point.
I agree. I think there's, first off, there's not even houses on the east side. Partly, and we have Ocean Terrace, but that's really it as far as the people that live on the east side of Jacksonville Drive. So what, I don't understand the point of putting a path to cater to, there's no residents to even eat or to. Everybody else is located on, north of Jacksonville Drive. Like if you had a street like Osceola, where you have people coming from both directions to the beach or somewhere else. I think that corridor, people use both sides of Osceola to get to the beach. It's a sidewalk, it's a small sidewalk on both sides, but people use both sides. I just don't see that on Jacksonville Drive. And I, I know it's reasonable traffic, but it's really not a busy street in comparison to crossing. I don't think it's difficult for people to cross Jacksonville Drive to get to one multi-use path that's eight feet wide on the north side. I don't think we need two paths to be, because I think eight, eight-foot path is.
Okay, so from what I'm hearing here, we don't think that we should have a path on the north side and the south side for four blocks. So that brings us back to where we were at the council meeting when this was first presented, was a longer, a larger path on the north side of the road. And I know you've all gone through why it's more problematic. But if there is only, I'm just thinking just space-wise, not necessarily the curbs. But if we, if we reshift the road south without the eight-foot path on the south side, we'd have an eight-foot path instead of a six-foot path on the north side, would still leave six feet on the south side for the, the utilities and all of that. So we just wouldn't have a path on the south side and we expand the one on the north side and shift the road down. I believe that's where we were two months ago. But yeah, for four blocks, I can see the argument here. And if it's only going to go four blocks and possibly five more, maybe it's three blocks down to Sanctuary. I mean, there is all the Palm Way neighborhood as well as the Ocean Terrace, but that's still not the, both of the people who use that area. So I think we really need to think about this before spending the money on building two paths. But I'm still, I'm far more of a proponent for the north side, as I stated before. It's seamless. It also shows that we're planning long-term when it connects over to the south, to the east side of South Beach Parkway. Because that's really going to be the, the big piece. So we can start here, but the main project is going to be between South Beach and Third.
Sounds like I'm hearing a consensus to do sidewalk and make it's on the north side of the road. Looking to see if there's head nods or thumbs up or seeing some head nods. Okay, I think we have our direction on this item. We will make it happen. Thank you. Kale, Brian, thank you both for your work on this.
You're welcome.
Kale, I'll get with you and Dennis tomorrow to lay out the appropriate course of action for us to move forward with.
You guys.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great presentation.
Next item we're going to talk about, just do them slightly out of order. I'd like to jump down to item number four, which is budgeted assumptions. Council may recall that last year at this time, at one of our briefings, Finance Director and I actually came to you and we walked you through what our assumptions were for the preparation of the upcoming year's budget. And that was so that you had an idea of what our thinking was coming into.
Mike, you're muted.
You know, if you click your mouse outside of this and activate a different app, the space bar doesn't work. Long and short, though, is that we are going to walk you through what our budget assumptions are for this upcoming fiscal year's budget preparation. I do have Ashley Gossett on the line to assist with any questions that you might have or the assumptions that we have within that document. And I need to pull it up. Hold on for one second. Okay, great. So the, the first assumption that we wanted to walk you through, and you should have all received a memo with your packets again in advance of the briefing for tonight. The first item is with regards to the millage rate. And as was the case last year, and also for the proposed fiscal year 2021 budget, we're proposing to hold the millage rate the same again at 3.9947. The next section of the memo that you should have received regarding revenues is where it gets a little bit different than in previous years. The, the first is, and you'll see that there's. The first is, and you'll see that there's, under that first check mark, one of the things that Ashley and her staff does is they take a look at the estimates that we anticipate for revenues going forward in time, except we're always operating just a little bit in arrears. One of the things that Ashley and her staff are looking at is that we are projecting a decline in state shared revenues, including sales tax revenues, in line with our experience during the Great Recession. So we're actually looking back a decade's worth in time. Ashley did, I think, a pretty good job of benchmarking. She took a look at what the actual revenue decreases were in the time of the Great Recession. And clearly, with the unemployment rates that we're seeing, even though they might be of a temporary basis, they're still being experienced as we speak. Those were the projections that she and her staff are making at this point in time. The second major bullet there is with regards to the utility revenues. And again, she's taking a look at revenues associated with those are based on CPI, where there is a policy in place to do such. And others, the rates are unchanged, and those are the electric, natural gas, stormwater, and sanitation. It's the water and sewer that are specifically tied to a CPI index. We also have, jumping down to Personnel Services. Obviously, we have a new pay plan that went into effect this past year, and we are in the process of getting ready to negotiate with our police department on their contract renewal. So we are putting assumptions into the budget based on those. We are also assuming that all of our positions are filled, and no lapse is budgeted with regards to those personnel positions. Pension contributions have all been updated accordingly, based on the most recent actuarial reports. And we are looking to add a CRA Program Manager position into the budget. That one was a little bit more palatable, specifically from the perspective that the CRA is viewed as an enterprise fund or a separate funding source outside of our general revenue. With regards to operating, we're looking at asking all of our departments to hold their operating expenses flat while providing the same level of service. We are also looking at potential reductions per department. And we are reserving some of those funds so that if there is an economic recovery at some point in 2021, we have the ability to release those funds accordingly. And if not, we're able to keep those pulled off to the side. With regards to debt service, we are still on track to be debt-free on October 1st of 2020. This is going to free up in excess of $4 million for utility projects. That is split up at $2.5 million for Beach's Energy and $1.8 million in water and sewer going forward into the future. With regards to transfers, we still consider, we still continue to make transfers via capital project funds as available to build up and maintain reserves for certain types of projects. The big thing that we did a little differently this year, last year, once we got the budget packaged and put together with you, we kind of did a, things that are not in the budget. And I talked with Ashley, and I wanted to actually walk you through that now, so you had an idea of what we were looking at if the economy had kept going the way it was going. But unfortunately, at this point, these are things we're going to have to put on the back burner. The first one was the Chief Information Officer. We were planning on spinning off the IT Department, or IT Division from Finance into its own department. The city is getting to a point where it needs to have an IT department that is robust in both its leadership, its philosophy, and its proactivity in working with department directors in both an enterprise solution as well as specific solutions to meet their needs and keep us on more of a cutting edge going forward. But unfortunately, we're going to have to wait on doing that till a later point in time. The second was with regards to a second Code Enforcement Officer. Councilmember Dumont can probably confirm that at each of the meetings we attended for the community conversations, community aesthetics was very high on the priority for our residents, both commercial and residential. Right now, code enforcement is acting in a reactive mode as opposed to a proactive mode. And in order to make that switch to proactive, we actually need more resources to do so. This is another one that is going to have to be placed on the back burner. While some people may say the philosophy is that if we collect code enforcement revenues, then it would pay for a second code enforcement officer. I would suppose to this council that the intent of code enforcement is not to generate money. The intent is to gain compliance. And if you are proactive in your code enforcement and talking to people proactively when you see an issue, the objective is to gain compliance before you ever have to issue a notice of violation and get them to appear in front of the special magistrate. So while in theory it would work to financially pay for itself, I would like to think that it would not pay for itself, because we would be gaining a lot more compliance. The third item is the Deputy Fire Marshal position that was approved for this year's budget. We've effectively frozen that position, even though it's in the pay plan. Steve Shado is still holding down the fort. He's running a little ragged. But this is something that I just don't feel comfortable filling this particular position at this point in time until we understand where we are in at least a six-plus-month window of financial revenues being realized and seeing just how bad this recession is going to be or projecting how long it may be. So these are the assumptions that we used as we are formulating the budget for fiscal year 2021. With that being said, we're open to any questions or comments that you may have. Going once, going twice. No hands being raised. We look forward to packaging up this document in the next few months and getting it out to council to take a look at. And obviously, once you get those budgets, if you have any questions, feel free to call either Ashley, me, or Karen, and we'll be more than happy to help you out with answering those questions. With that being said, we'll move on to item number four, which is the flip, which is the upcoming Fourth of July. Thank you, Ashley. The upcoming Fourth of July. I mentioned to you at our last Monday council meeting that the fireworks contract had been submitted to the city for execution and that I was not prepared to sign it at this point in time, based on where we are with regards to COVID-19 response. To get a little bit more particular, we are currently five weeks out from Fourth of July, six, five to six weeks out from Fourth of July. And we are still at a point of social distancing being in effect. Some businesses still being closed, and other businesses only being open for 25% capacity. I recognize that the only other time the Fourth of July was canceled in the city was a number of years ago. And obviously, that was a big issue at the time. This is a premier or signature event from the city. What I wanted to do was put this on our radar. If we need to wait another week and talk about it at the end of next week's council meeting, so be it. But I wanted to give you a little bit of feedback. The city of Jacksonville has not yet made a decision that we've heard of in terms of going forth with the Fourth of July and their fireworks exhibit. And we've also contacted the city of St. Augustine, who has effectively said they're waiting to see what we do. So with that being said, I'd like to get a little bit of feedback from the city council as to what your thought process is based on where we are in the COVID-19 response before we make any decisions. And we'll start with Mayor Latham.
Mayor, you're muted.
Mayor, we still can't hear you. It looks like your microphone is muted.
All right, Zach, got you? Sorry about that. Yeah, I guess you're right. My mouse was off, and I was pressing the button, and nothing was happening. What is the drop dead date for our contract? In other words, we've gotten to what timeframe to commit monetarily to the fireworks?
We have until approximately the end of this month. The fireworks company has told us they've got about a three-to-four-week working window. So to add in a little bit of a conservative buffer, because we don't want to be those people that pull the trigger at the last possible moment, that puts at about the end of this month that we would need to make a decision.
And if I remember correctly, we're paying about 25 grand for the fireworks themselves. And then what's the amount that we would be putting into overtime for the police?
I do not have the overtime for police handy. But my understanding, and Ashley, if you're still on the line, you might want to come back into the conversation. Jacob, if you could bring her in. There's actually two components to this from a financial funding perspective. The city actually budgets just over $10,000 a year to pay for barricades, security, and some other things on our end. The city of Jacksonville has actually paid for the fireworks the past couple of years to the tune of in excess of $20,000. Ashley, is there anything more you want to add to that?
No, sir. The city of Jacksonville has been covering the cost of the fireworks themselves for probably the last four years. And we are responsible for the security fencing and, like, portable restrooms.
Logistically, we need to make a decision, or we lose basically our deposit. Is that correct, Mike? Are we putting, like, basically a deposit now?
I don't believe we've paid anything at this point in time. The fireworks company has indicated that window that they need for us to execute the agreement and to do the setup and us to make the deposit at that point in time.
So my point is, if we agree to go ahead and move forward, and we're going to put $10,000 or $20,000 or whatever that number is, and then we find out that we're still, with social distancing, and we're not, there's no way we're going to make the criteria, have we, are we making a financial commitment, or are they going to give us the ability to step back?
For the fireworks company, we wouldn't be making that financial commitment until the end of the month. Yet to the end of the month, and we make a financial commitment. I've not looked at the agreement yet. Chris Ambrosio's on the line. I know he's in the process of reviewing it. I do know if that agreement contains a non-refundable deposit.
Yep. The answer is that we would be required to put down a $12,500 deposit, but if that's, that might be Jacksonville putting that deposit down. However, the vendor, in their current agreement, and I would ask to revise this agreement, but the way they currently have it in their standard agreement is we must provide 30 days' written notice if we intend on canceling. Or else we would forfeit the deposit.
So that's where that end of the month comes into play. And Mayor, you're muted again.
Yeah, so Jacksonville would be making that commitment. They're leaving it to us to make that call?
One of the things that Ashley confirmed is that while Jacksonville has paid the fireworks for the past four years, we do not appear to have an actual written contract or written agreement between us and the city of Jacksonville for the payment of the fireworks.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Nichols, you have your hand raised.
I guess my understanding is that the city of Jacksonville is still a go at this point in time. But just like you're saying, I'm guessing we're going to have a council briefing on the 25th. I'd like to do everything we can to pretend to not cancel this event, but I think we need to make that decision on the 25th, because a lot is going to, a lot could change in the next two weeks.
This brings us up to a subsidiary question. The 25th, I believe, is a holiday weekend. Planning on having a briefing on that Monday. Would you like to have a special briefing on Tuesday, the 26th, specifically to talk about Fourth of July only? I'm seeing multiple heads nodding. Try to set up a council briefing specifically to talk about the Fourth of July, that week of the 25th, preferably on Tuesday, the 26th. So we, some final direction of whether or not we are, or whether we're canceling.
One other question. I mean, we're still under a state of emergency, right?
That's correct, and it was, Chris Ambrosio can correct me if I'm wrong, that was just extended for a 60-day window.
60?
To July 7th.
Right. Under the governor's orders, the original declaration of the state of emergency throughout the state has been extended to at least July 7th currently.
Okay.
And currently, the Mayor Curry's declaration is indefinite at this stage. There's no defined period.
Chris, you also had your hand raised. Was there something else you wanted to add from the attorney's office?
Yeah, from the contract aspect, I, just to point out to the council, I've never spoken to anybody from City of Jacksonville with respect to the contract agreement that the vendor Pyro shows provided to us. So in preparation of the May 26th, between Mike and Ashley and I, I think we should talk to the City of Jacksonville representatives to see what types of commitments they want to make, what contract they have seen. I don't know if they've seen the same Pyro show vendor contract agreement that I've seen, but I don't accept this contract on behalf of the City of Jacksonville Beach. I'd want to modify this. So that's something I just wanted to point out to the council. That's part of what we would need to do in preparation for May 26th.
Counselor Vogel saying, you have your hand raised?
What about prior, discussing it prior to the meeting June 1st? To the, prior to the council meeting, June 1st, because we still have a month. We'd still be within that timeframe.
We could do that. We could add it as an item for discussion only on June 1st, just to get a consensus of whether or not to proceed. Would you rather do that on the 1st than hold a special briefing on the 26th?
I would, and we're still, we still have four days, three, three days, I guess, to get back with the vendor, because of 30 days' notice, even under that current agreement that Chris was talking about.
If there's no objections, we will do that and add it as a discussion item on the June 1st agenda. And then that way, we'll hopefully have all of our questions answered with regards to the agreement. We'll see where we are with regards to declaration of state of emergency, and we'll be able to make a final decision at that point in time. Does that seem to work for everybody? Like watching those bobbleheads at a baseball game. It's awesome. Any other comments or questions on Fourth of July before we move on to the surprise fifth item?
Mike, sorry. Just to confirm, so May 26th, no meeting, no briefing?
That's correct. We'll just add it as a discussion item on the June 1st meeting.
Okay.
The last item that I wanted to talk with council about is with regards to where we are in our return to normalcy with regards to city operations. You should have all received an email that indicated that today we were bringing back employees who had been working remotely. We've set up our facilities so that we can accommodate social distancing within the workplace. We are taking additional precautions where we have employees that have to, for their work purposes, work closer than the six-foot distance separation, with providing the appropriate PPE in order to do so. And we're getting comfortable with working in our day-to-day environment within City Hall using PPE and social distancing. The next phase for us, we'll be talking about when is the appropriate time to open our city facilities, and particularly City Hall to the public. The date that we're currently targeting to make that happen is June 1st, where we would basically say we are open to the public and allow people to start coming back into the buildings. This will allow us to do a lot of different things. The first and foremost is to allow us to start doing those quasi-judicial functions that have essentially been on hold for an extended period of time due to COVID-19 and the safer-at-home declarations. The big thing that this would mean for us is that June 1st would mean that that particular meeting would actually be held probably in a hybrid format here at City Hall, where we would have the council members present, those who did not feel comfortable being present. They could still be tied in using CMT or other forms of technology. We would also have multiple forms of public input in order to participate in the meetings as well. What I wanted to get a gut feel of today from the council was, as we continue to progress through this grad- What I wanted to get a gut feel of today from the council was, as we continue to progress through this gradual opening with right now 25% capacity, how comfortable you all are with coming to your, coming back to city hall for your first in-person meeting on June 1st. And I see, Chris, you still have your hand raised. I didn't know if you wanted to provide input from the attorney's office at all?
No, sorry, I forgot to lower my hand, but I will be glad to provide information as to all of our boards, the magistrate. Any questions with respect to any of that? Any questions with respect to hybrid meetings, use of CMT, anything at all?
Counselor Dumont?
Thank you. So I'm, I take it when you say hybrid, you're not talking about video. I'm just thinking about how city hall, how the council chambers is set up. If, let's say I'm like, I never have to leave my house again. This is kind of cool. So I want to do it this way. I would not be on video and I wouldn't be able to see the people who are speaking unless I was watching on YouTube and then it'd just be a little back of head. Am I getting this correct? And then how, I'm taking it, what you're talking about is we would call in, we wouldn't be using a platform like this. So we lose the visual aspect.
That is, that is a possibility. We've not worked through all the details yet of what a hybrid would look like. If you recall, the last in-person meeting that we had was closed to public attendance, even though the public could still participate. Our intention would be that the meeting would be open to the public. They would be able to come into the council chambers. The way we had the room set up with regards to six-foot separation of everyone in the room is something we would probably still do. If we had an item that required or resulted in more people showing up than the room had capacity to hold, we would have to create a staging area where people could be brought in for certain issues and brought back out into hallways or to the exterior of the building until the next item arises that they want to come inside for, recognizing that there is still a portion of our population, those that are 65 and older and those that have underlying health conditions are still being advised not to leave their homes unless absolutely necessary. We still need to maintain multiple, multiple forms of their input into how we conduct our business. But this is one of those things where if we're going to open our city hall to conduct transactional business, such as allowing people into the lobby of city hall to start paying their utility bills and putting the tape markings on the floor and having someone at the doors and making sure we don't exceed capacities. If we're conducting transactional, transactional business, well then at what point in time do we start holding our council meetings back in the council chambers in some modified fashion? And I want to make sure that I've got good input from the council that if we are opening the building to the public, that you're comfortable with coming back into the building in order to conduct your business as well. Because if the council is not comfortable with coming back into city hall until further restrictions are lifted, then it gets a little tentative as to why I'm opening up the building to the remainder of the public. If you all who represent the public don't want to come into the building. So you can see the, there's a dilemma here. It kind of needs to be packaged together. If I open the doors, we're open for business. If I don't open the doors, we're closed for business. Council meetings, board of adjustment, special magistrate is all part of our conducting of business and being open to the public. That's why I'm looking for a little bit of input from you all.
With moving 4th of July fireworks to the first, I don't expect it to be an empty hall. You get fireworks on the, on the agenda, even if it's just for discussion, you're going to get a lot of people. So I would suggest opening city hall on the second. And I don't know what else is going to be on the agenda for the first either. So if it's, if there are more contentious issues, I just don't see it being a smooth flowing meeting, but that's just me. I just remember what it was like the last time we had, the last couple of times, there were conversations about possibly not doing fireworks and there was standing room only. So that's something we should consider about what is on the agenda in this situation.
Mayor Latham?
I, I know we need to move forward. There's a lot of people waiting for variances to have work done around their house. And for that reason, it's important that we get open as soon as we can. That being said, I also think it's important that, you know, let's use public supermarket for an example. They do a great job of putting tape on the floor, exits for how far away you need to be. But they're not holding a big training session or something like that where they're going to be big groups of people together. So in my mind, you're talking about two situations. Even though you're talking about opening city hall, I don't think that necessarily means that we have to conduct meetings in council at the same time. If we're in, still in a social distancing element, I'm not comfortable asking the council to come back to the, to the council chambers. Because the separation that we're using, we noticed that during the first attempt at this, it really cuts down the amount of people that can come in and the interaction of the people that come in. So that's my two bits. I think we should, we should look at it as two separate elements. The opening of city hall is one and then using the council chambers is the other. Thank you.
Counselor Vogel saying?
Exactly what I was going to say, Mayor. Two completely different animals there. And most employees, when dealing with the public have protections in city hall. For instance, if you're paying your utility bill, there's a glass partition. I'm assuming for planning department, we can put up a glass partition so they're not face-to-face dealing with applications and things like that and having discussions. So I would like to mirrors the way Publix has done that for their employees. And that's just really not possible in, in the chambers. I just think it's a different dynamic. I think it should be treated differently. So in some, and we can't always predict how many people are going to show up. Some issues that we think are going to be smooth, next thing you know, it's standing room only. And then what are we, with social distancing, I just don't think it's possible. So I think I'm comfortable, as the mayor just said, with keeping it, opening city hall, but not having meetings in, in chambers.
Vice Mayor Hoffman?
I just also wanted to agree with Mayor Latham and Mr. Vogel saying, I think there's a huge difference between meetings and transactional business, which someone can come in and quickly do their business and be on the way and we can control that flow. And with meetings, we just don't have that same opportunity. The name of the game right now for, for businesses and organizations is phased reopening. And I think that it is okay for us to consider a phased reopening as well.
Any other hands or thoughts on this topic? Okay, city attorney, do you have any questions for them? Or I think we're pretty clear with what we heard?
Yep, we're, we're pretty clear. Perhaps part of the phasing in can be some of our smaller hearings, not the, necessarily the city council agenda items or meetings, I should say, because like the council members have said, we never know, we could get 100 people there for that on a city council meeting. However, some of our smaller boards may be able to conduct certain matters and business items where we know the crowds will be small, or even if those particular boards don't have any quasi judicial aspects to it, they may be able to conduct some business with very minimal or even no public participation. Not that they can't attend, but there may be no need for public participation in terms of, you know, stating things on the record or presenting any evidence. So perhaps as part of our phasing in, we can conduct some of those types of meetings, but we can talk, Mike and I can talk about all of that later. But, but if, absolutely, I think we got the message from the city council clearly tonight with respect to the city council meetings.
Counselor Dumont?
The, we emailed you a while ago and you said you were going to look into this about, the email was with regard to the CRA using something like Zoom to get these meetings going. And you said that you're going to check into their, if they have the technology at home to be able to do so. Is it possible to, one, did you do that? And do you know if the board members do have the technology to be able to use at home that's readily available to be able to do virtual meetings? Because even if it's quasi judicial, it still could be done online if needed. There's a, like was mentioned before, there are some issues that you don't think there's going to be a lot of people and then the place gets packed. I remember there, there were oftentimes with, on the planning commission, that we would have far larger crowds than the city council meetings had, depending on what was on the agenda. But I don't know if they're able, like technology-wise, to be able to do that. So Mike, were you able to look into that at all?
We'll answer this question in two parts. The first one is with regards to CRA and some of the other boards with regard to technology. Bill Mann is in the process of still confirming what they have for technology, but his intention is to have a CRA briefing on, I believe, the 26th of this month to basically review a handful of topics for the CRA. They would not be looking at holding any type of voting. It would be more of a briefing similar to what we do with council. And that would be their toe in the water of doing the virtual meetings. The, the second part that you indicated with regards to the quasi judicial function, and I'll turn it over to Chris here to provide you a little bit more input. The, the issue that we're having is with some of our secondary boards, such as planning and special magistrate, whereby Chris recently attended a, a video conference with attorneys from across the state. And there are a preponderance of governmental organizations that are steering clear of holding any type of quasi judicial hearing or process or procedure using virtual platforms. And Chris could probably expound on what a lot of those issues are. But this is, this is kind of the catch 22. If the, if the council is saying that they're uncomfortable with coming into the building and conducting business in the council chambers, then it becomes very difficult for me to persuade other boards that they should come in and conduct their business in the council chambers. Or as Chris would say, to proceed in a virtual fashion, where you may end up with some challenges that we're not expecting with regards to the, the process or the procedure being followed. And Chris, I don't know if there's anything you want to chime in with regard to that. But that's one of the reasons that I was looking at it from the perspective of if, if we're holding meetings at city hall, then we're all holding meetings at city hall. But if we're not holding meetings at city hall, then no one's holding meetings at city hall. Because it starts to get very dicey where someone says, well, why is it you're holding a meeting for the special magistrate, but you're not doing one with the planning board? That doesn't make sense to me. And so we're, we're starting to pick and choose at that point in time. But Chris, if you want to just expound a little bit on what you heard from that conference the other day?
Yes, so, oops, sorry. So I, I attended a, a large seminar that involved many of the leading attorneys on municipal law, land use hearings, quasi judicial hearings, and also private, those were government attorneys and also private attorneys that engage in that. And also the contractors that would be making representations at those hearings. So we heard from the other side of the table. And it was uniformly recommended that local governments try to stay away from conducting virtual quasi judicial hearings. A lot of, I would say a large majority of the local governments aren't even doing it. They've absolutely decided to postpone until they can have an in-person quasi judicial. Those few governments that have had quasi judicial hearings have reported various problems. But the overall concerns are from this large body and all the moderators was that we, we have a, a chance of being challenged and the proceeding itself, if it were to proceed, would be challenged as being invalid or void. And we could also face lawsuit and appeals for challenges against substantive due process, procedural due process, improper handling or processing of testimony, evidence, the right to cross witness and exam, examine witnesses, potentially making, not making an accurate record, which in quasi judicial hearings is, is a primary concern, having a accurate record. And the, the right of affected persons in certain matters to receive the materials and the evidence that's going to be submitted at the hearing. But the list went on, it was a pretty substantial list of concerns that these government attorneys have with trying to steer clear of pitfalls and problems while trying to conduct a lawful, proper quasi judicial hearing where we wouldn't be challenged. And the meeting went on for 90 minutes and 89 minutes of it was basically talk of why we should just steer clear. So if there, if there aren't any emergency matters or immediate needs, the overall recommendation from this body was that you should avoid virtual quasi judicial hearings. And it's difficult for me to say that because I have so many issues that need to be addressed from my office and then my department heads that are contacting me saying they need these. And I, and I get it. And of course, our residents and citizens, contractors and builders. But that, that's the overall message. And I'll share with you that a couple of other local attorneys have said to me that they are definitely not going to be conducting quasi judicial hearings for, for the same reasons that they're concerned. City of St. Augustine had one, but their legal department essentially recommended that it not be taken. But they were directed that it not be had, but that they were told by their leaders to have one. So I would say, as, as much as I want to start to have quasi judicial hearings and I want magistrate hearings, I would prefer that they be in person. And I, and I feel like that serves the parties better as well. So not just for me personally and my ability to handle them and all the different people that are involved in having that proceeding. But I truly believe that the parties would, are better represented and can better represent their case in an in-person quasi judicial hearing.
The governor's executive order on this was, I take it silent, other than council. Councils could meet like this, but he, the executive order was silent on quasi judicial?
On quasi judicial, it wasn't necessarily, yeah, it wasn't necessarily explicitly stated as quasi judicial hearings. But read inside that, we have all, all of the municipal attorneys that I've spoken to and that I've been on with seminars, we've all read that, those orders as being, including quasi judicial hearings, that we can conduct them using CMT. However, the, the practical logistics of it are left up to us to try to figure out. But they've opened the door for us to, to use CMT. And some, a few governments have tried to do that using CMT.
Okay, thank you.
I think we received the direction we needed on this particular item. So it sounds like we will not have a council briefing on the 26th, which would be the Tuesday after the holiday weekend. But we will add an item to the June 1st agenda, which we will still hold virtually to make a final decision regarding 4th of July fireworks. With that being said, I've got no other topics to talk with the council about tonight. And I'm not going to ask you if you have any topics you want to talk about either. So with that being said, it is 7:30. Everybody go and have a good evening and we'll consider the council briefing closed unless, Mayor, there's anything you want to touch on.
Nope. Thanks, you guys. Have a good night.